Everybody, it's six o'clock, we're gonna get started. I want to welcome everybody tonight. This is a regular scheduled board meeting for the Edgewood City Schools. We're gonna do this a little different, so would you please stand for prayer and remain standing? Mrs. Hanson, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Gabbert?
Here.
Mrs. Ashcraft? Mr. Messerschmidt?
Here.
Mr. Pressler?
Here.
Mr. York?
Here.
Thank you. Let's bow together, let's take a moment of silence just to pray for the family of Howie Dean. Father, we come to you through the name of Jesus, beseeching your help and comfort and encouragement for this family. Lord, there's already been so many things that have been said and expressed, but we're reminded of the need to keep on praying, to keep on supporting. Father, we want to thank you for the opportunity to meet here tonight and beseech your favor upon this meeting, for the presentations that will be made, for the participation that will be happening, for the leadership of this Board of Education. Lord, all of these things, we look to heaven for your blessing upon. We're grateful to you. Our words can never be adequate to express the thanks that we feel for living in this community and seeing your hand all around us. Now, we pray, Lord, your blessing upon this time, upon this meeting. We ask it together in Christ's name, amen.
Good evening, everybody. We've got some of our elementary students here to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm gonna let them say their first name really quickly before we begin.
My name Jamison King.
Jamison.
Gavin Willhite.
Johnny Folks.
Cohen Ward.
Kevin Devon Poit.
Jason Atkins.
Chandler Webb.
Ollie.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, I'm gonna look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Mr. York, do I have a second?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft. Mrs. Hanson, would you call the roll, please?
Before we do that, I wanted to just point out two changes that were made on the agenda today under the treasures items. Item E was removed and replaced with a different item E. The first item E was something that didn't need board approval, but the second item E was something that was sent to me by email this morning. It's the amount and rates for tax levies and whatnot that has to be filed with the auditor's office in April. So I added that last minute. Any questions? No.
Mrs. Hanson, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
At this time, we're gonna start our presentations. We have several tonight. It's kind of exciting to get back to a little bit of something that's normal. We used to, we used to do these kind of pretty regular over the last years and COVID's kind of put a damper on things. Tonight, we're gonna rock this place, I believe, so. At this time, we're gonna, we're gonna come down here to the front and we're gonna get started.
Good evening, everybody. Hey, first of all, I want to say a huge thank you to the parents and the students that showed up to lead our Pledge of Allegiance. It means a lot and I'm extremely proud of those young men. My name is Jake White. I am the Dean of SCL, Social Emotional Learning for grades K to five here within the Edgewood City School District. I previously taught fourth grade, bounced to Middletown for a couple of years and came back and am so proud to be here. Graduate of Edgewood City Schools, I believe blue, Navy Blue specifically, and I'm extremely proud to be here. Those, those young men you saw are part of our group called the SEALs. We have a SEAL team at each building, which is a mentorship program that I oversee. We meet weekly to discuss many topics. Our younger SEAL teams have been working through topics such as regulating emotions, identifying those emotions and how to control them so that we can best fit into our communities to learn and to make an impact that way. And our older SEALs, our third through fifth grade SEALs, have been working on topics such as collaboration, accountability, ownership, and most recently, service. So recently, we even cleaned up the grounds at EIS and the boys were extremely inspired. And I think that they learned the lesson that service is a reward even more than getting something in return. It's always great to give, so I'm very proud of them. And actually, we plan on going and visiting Wright Patterson Air Force Base Museum this Friday with those third through fifth grade kids and I'm excited to take them and, and again, just be in a community, uh, community together. So thank you, guys, for coming. Thank you, parents, for, for bringing them. I know it was quick, but it really means a lot and you should be proud of your kids. At this time, we're gonna turn our attention to the screen. One of the things that our department put out this year was our first We Are Edgewood Day. It happened in January. We wanted something to be quick, simple, and effective, to bring our community together, to bring our schools together, and to, again, highlight what great things happen in our building because there are a lot of great things that happen. So go ahead and turn your attention to the screen.
I like Edgewood because all the teachers are really nice. And when you tell them what your dream is, they always encourage you to follow.
The Edgewood School District is a special place to me. It's home. I graduated from Edgewood, I live in Edgewood District, and my kids have attended or are still in this great school district. Edgewood is a close-knit community. We're like a family that holds together during hard times and also good times to support each other. In our district, we have amazing teachers that go above and beyond every single day to meet the needs of their students. We have kids that are learning how to be responsible, respectful, and safe, not only throughout the school, but also throughout our community. And then we have our community that backs us. Together, we are Edgewood.
I like my friends because they're really nice and helpful.
Everyone's like encouraging here.
The Edgewood community is an amazing place to work. It's an amazing place to be. Our staff, students show amazing safety, responsibility, respect for each other, for our community.
Like, everybody as a whole is nice. They look out for each other and like, they always got your back, too.
This was my high school, this was my school where I graduated from. So obviously, Edgewood means a lot to me personally because it was a great place for me to go to school and I hope that I can make that same experience as positive for you guys as it was for me. I want this to be the best school in Butler County, if not the state, if not the nation. We're gonna do it together by being respectful, responsible, safe, and together, and kind. Because it's not on here, but we want to be kind as well because we are Edgewood, we are Cougars. We're proud and together, we're gonna be the best school in the state of Ohio.
We are like a family. This is a great place to work, great students, every day is a happy place, a place of joy here at EIS.
My teacher, she's really helpful and she's really nice.
Who's your favorite teacher?
Miss Parker.
Miss Parker.
Should I tell her?
No.
Don't tell her, okay?
At Edgewood Intermediate School, we have a strong sense of community. We are using our three Bs as the foundation for guiding our students.
All the students are really nice and I don't ever get bored.
Edgewood's a special place because of the people here. Our students are responsible, they're respectful, we have a phenomenal staff, K to 12. Our community's behind us, they're a part of the building. It's just a great place to be.
On the first day when I came to high school, I was looking around for my classes because I was new and they actually showed me around. So the staff is really helpful.
I was a graduate of Edgewood, I grew up in the Edgewood community. I've done my entire teaching career here at Edgewood and I'm now a parent and have my own kids here that are also experiencing Edgewood. So like, it has a great deal to offer. As like I said, as far as a sense of community, the, the safe aspects of it, of our environment, I feel like are very important and I'm looking forward to seeing where we, we go in the future.
Everyone's like respectful.
I'm so excited to participate in We Are Edgewood Day this Friday. It's a great event because Edgewood is such a special place. It's such a great community to be around with the students, the families. We all gather around and support one another. We are respectful, we are together, we are responsible, and we are a caring community. And I'm just excited to kick off this day and let's go celebrate.
We are.
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 We are Edgewood.
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 We are Edgewood.
We are Edgewood.
Together.
We, we are Edgewood.
We are Edgewood.
Awesome.
That's so fantastic.
That was cool.
Hello, I'm Ross Fussneck, the Superintendent of the Edgewood City School District. I'm very excited about We Are Edgewood Day at Edgewood City Schools. I want to let you know that we can finish strong the rest of the year. We can be responsible, respectful, safe, and stick together. We've been through a lot together, just like any family, in the last year, year and a half, two years. But we've always come together and we've always succeeded and excelled and did what we always do at Edgewood. Again, let's finish strong, safe, respectful, responsible, and together. We are Edgewood.
Hello, we're gonna do things a little, we're gonna do our presentation first, if that's okay for my media folks, and then we're gonna perform after the presentation. If that is okay, we're going a little off, off-topic here, I'll get out the way. Hello, my name is Libby Wolf and this is Carmen Fields and I am the high school choral director. She is the middle school choral director. And we are very thankful to be here this evening to share a little bit about what we do and kind of showcase the students that we work with every day. I am in charge, we're gonna talk a little bit about the choraliers first, they're gonna perform for you and then Mrs. Fields is gonna talk about the Ovatures, who is the middle school show choir and like I said, hopefully introduced to you, like I said, these amazing students. So if you could cue the next slide, please. I have a little historical thing about the choraliers. We had a historian that did a whole big research thing about it in our boosters organization, but it has been around for forty-three years. And I feel like that is very much a testament to the program itself. It is a group of singer and dancers, but it is so much more than that. So for forty-three years, we have had Edgewood Choraliers at the Edgewood City School District. I was an Edgewood choralier when I was in high school and I can remember being a K through 12 member of the Edgewood community. I can remember being an elementary school student and seeing those choraliers. So they have been a part, I just had my forty-second birthday. So they've been a part of my life for a lot of those years as well. So my mentor, Sue Combs, who used to be the director when I was a choralier, she used to call us the Goodwill Ambassadors when we would go out into the community and I feel like that's a very fitting term for what we do. We're not a part of a, you know, athletic league or something like that. We represent Edgewood no matter where we go, whether it be Nashville, Tennessee, or across the state of Ohio. Really and truly, I have the best of the best at Edgewood High School and the students that make up my organization. So forty-three years, like I said, I think that that's a testament to the program that's been around and has been built year after year after year. Next slide, if you would, please. We have literally throughout that legacy, hundreds and hundreds of students. Some of them are here, I think, right? Mr. White, right, was a choralier, there he is, yeah. And again, it, it affected me that I wanted to become a music educator and to, to take over a program, like I said, that was so important to me, is truly just a surreal experience. So these students get so much out of what this program is, all right, as far as character and work ethic and just being an overall just amazing human. Like I said, it's more than just the singing and dancing part of it. But we have some students that wanted to just briefly just kind of describe their experience, if you would. So I have three lovely ladies coming out here, come down here, ladies, if you would. And we'll start, uh-oh, who wants to go first? Uh-oh, you picked the wrong spot. This is Bella McKendrick and she's gonna go first.
Choraliers has been like a big family for all of us and I know one of my favorite things throughout all of this was we got the honor to go to Nashville this year and the best moment of it was when we made finals and we all had to run back to our rooms to get ready because we were the first group that got to go. And that was one of the best moments that I think I've ever experienced because of this program.
I'm Cameron Gully and I've been doing choraliers for three years now and I've made so many amazing friends and have met so many different people from so many different schools and I've made so many memories. And I don't know what I would do without this group of people because I love them. I love you guys.
My name's Ella Testis, this is my third year being a part of Choraliers. I just want to say how appreciative of, for this group that I am. I've had two brothers go through this program, so I was an admirer from the audience for a long time. And I'm just so thankful that I get to be a part of this group. Not every school gets to have a show choir, so this is just such a blessing and I'm thankful to Edgewood for that.
All right, so just a brief kind of overview of what it is. I see my students after they graduate and they do make just lifelong friendships. You know, they still go on vacations together. We've had, you know, marriages that I've come out of, you know, people who've been in the choralier. So it is just leaving an imprint, for sure, on what these students are doing. So let's tell us, I'll tell you a little bit about what it is, yeah? So if you go to the next slide, please. There is our group, right? This is our choralier group from this season. We kind of have a skeleton crew with the rescheduling of the meeting, so when we perform today, they won't look quite that big. But it's thirty-five singer and dancers. We have eleven combo members that are student musicians from the high school and we have, I think, five tech crew members that work behind the scenes. You're gonna see some clips from the actual show that we put on this year and it is quite a production. There's a lot of time and hours spent to perfect their product and it takes a lot of teamwork and it takes a lot of their time, like I said, to make it be the level and the caliber that it is. So like I said, those are the amazing students that make up the program this year. Our theme this year was Light the Fuse and all of our songs kind of had like a dynamite or bang or pow. Like, they kind of had a loose theme, if you will, within all the songs that kind of keep it together and make it entertaining. So it was, it was a hit, for sure. We had some success with the program and it was a lot of fun to put together this year. Next slide. So our season, we actually start with a camp in August and, you know, the start of the school year was a little bumpy with COVID. Our choreographer ended up with COVID and it didn't quite go the way that we normally planned. But once we got to January, that is when our season runs, it's basically January to March. And we do a little event called Echoes at the Edge, which is kind of a workshop for the kids. It allows us to premiere our show here, kind of on our home turf, before we take it on the road, you know, with our family and friends out in the audience versus, you know, a bunch of judges who are in the booth judging us, that kind of thing. So we tried it on January the fifteenth where we had our clinicians come in. I got COVID, so we didn't get to do our premiere. That was scheduled take two for February the fifth. There was a huge ice storm, so I want to thank, I know Mr. Thomas was out there. There was a bunch of our custodial crew trying to get us to be able to have that premiere because everything had kept getting pushed back, pushed back, pushed back. So I appreciate the efforts made for us to be able to do our premiere show then on February fifth. The workshop is fun, we do a lot of team building, just some different activities to kind of get them comfortable with each other and, like I said, kick off the season. So next slide is just a little video from some of the fun things that we did at Echoes. Lots of fun theater games. And at Echoes, we were fortunate to have the Ovatures, we had the middle school group there as well, which was a great building, as a building block to have the younger groups, you know, see the older ones and make those connections. So again, we had a slew of kids running around here doing all kinds of cool stuff. So then our competition season, I believe we went to five competitions. Our first one, we had to pick up because we had one that was canceled. So we went to Fort Rain, Indiana and competed at the Carol Classic. We got second place, which is pretty great for your first time out. We had a pretty young group this year of performers that had never really done anything like that. So you can't really know about it until you get there, right? And you're like, oh, I see what's going on. We had the Best Band, that's a caption award that is a huge accolade out of all the bands there. Our combo got the Best Band as the coming band. And then they pick one performer from our group throughout the show and they award them as a Best Performer. So Katie Valentine got the Best Performer. We traveled to Ross, a local one, which is great. At the end of February, we got first place in our division. We had Best Costumes, which were amazing. And then the Best Male Soloist for the entire day out of every group was our very own Aaron Castro. You're gonna hear him sing tonight because we're gonna do that ballad. And he actually won that award twice this season, which is pretty awesome. So super talented. And then, middle of our season is we went to Nashville. So I want to talk a little bit about the Nashville trip because I know the board approved that for us to go and travel to Nashville and we are so grateful because it was truly an amazing experience. We went to Nashville, it was called the Heart of America. The kids got to stay at the Gayland, or the Gaylord Opryland Hotel, which is a huge, you know, just to stay in a place like that was pretty amazing. And we got to do a lot of really cool things in downtown Nashville, which I'll talk about. But they got to do a trip, right? And in our COVID years, that has been something that has been truly missing, I think, for our students, is to have authentic experiences outside of the classroom where they can truly learn about things. And just the bonding and the relationships they made. Me, as a teacher, right, to fill my cup and be with my students in that way, oh my goodness. It was, it was just what the doctor ordered and, I mean, these kids, you could just see it. You could feel the energy that they had being able to do something like that. So the experiences they have, they will take with them forever and I'm so grateful for that. So I'm just gonna talk about a couple of things here for our slide from Nashville, if you would. Oh, we won some awards, too, sorry, I forgot about that. You can read that. So we went to Wax Museum, we went to like an aquarium, they love the pool. The pool loses its luster, I think, when you get to be an adult, right? And you go to the pool, it's not as cool, but they love the pool, right? Can we go to the pool? I guess, if you want to. Yes, so they went to the pool, had fun. So we did a lot of cool things within Nashville, if you go to the next one. One of them was the host group put on a special thing for our students at the Wild Horse Saloon downtown in Nashville. We had an exclusive area within the facility. We had, you know, special wristbands and they did a whole like kind of pulled pork meal. They had, you know, foosball tables and pool tables just for our kids to be able to be there. And, I mean, they felt like rock stars. They had cover bands that were there playing live, you know, country music, line dancing. I mean, it was, it was amazing. So we did that, that Friday night, we were there, they got to wear their, you know, cowboy vests and walked down, you know, the main drag of Nashville, which was pretty cool. And then this one. Our last day there, we were able to go to the historic RCA Studio B. This is a very old brick building, one of the last kind of original standing recording facilities in Nashville. And we, as a group, were able to record a song there, actually, two songs there. And it, let me just tell you, it was phenomenal. If you go to the next slide here. We were in this room and it is literally one studio and this, not, not a real big space. The floor, you can see all that. But we had our, kind of our tour guide historian that kind of just outlined, got like a half hour kind of session with him to talk about the history of that room. And I'm telling you, when he walked in, like, you could just feel it. Like Elvis Presley himself was in that room and Dolly Parton and just some of these big names were recording songs in that very, very space. It hadn't changed at all, it was very historic. The instruments that were used to record some of the hits that you know were sitting right there for the kids to see. And it was just truly an experience, like I said, unlike any other. I've had a lot of musical experiences in my life and that one, I will never forget. Like, it affected you. If you turn it to the next one there, we got a couple pictures. Our students got to play the, the session instruments that were there. That was the drum kit that was in kind of the box. The thing on the right, our synth player, Chloe, had always dreamed of playing a Steinway piano. That piano was played by Elvis Presley and she got to play it for the first time. So I wish to play a Steinway piano and not only that, but play one that Elvis himself had played. I got to play it and again, was like, I don't, I don't know what to do, I don't know if I should touch the, I don't know. It was crazy, it was crazy. The X there in the center was kind of in this obscure area in the room and they determined that that was kind of the sweet spot acoustically of that recording space. So when singers went to sing, that was the place where, you know, he told us again about Elvis at two in the morning, standing in that spot in the dark to record one of his songs, right? And again, you got to stand in that place. So again, things you can't learn in a classroom, they'll take that with them forever. Next slide, please. So then after we have all the warm fuzzies about the experience, they got to record songs from their competition show. So we got a half hour of recording session to do a couple takes of some of our songs. We have our, you know, our student musicians and the combo got to play and record. And I will tell you, when you're recording, you're in a recording situation, it is all fine and dandy and then you see that red light and you're like, oh my gosh, like something you've done a million times, right? So that, and that red light's flashing, you get a little pressure. These kids, you would have thought they had done it a million times, like, they were amazing. And we got to take a CD of the two tracks from the show and it was just awesome. So that was a pretty cool experience. I'm rounded up here, folks, I promise. All right, Lebanon Show Choir Classic, that was our next competition that we stopped at. And if you look here in this picture, that is, the Ovatures went with us, right? Mrs. Fields is gonna talk about that, that is the middle school group. She had forty-nine members of the Ovatures this year. So you're looking at over maybe about a hundred or so kids that we traveled with, the two of us, to Lebanon for the day, for a long day, but it was so much fun. Yes, so we did that. Again, got first place, best costumes, you can read those awards, that's fine. Fairfield Crystal Classic was our last one. That is a local competition, kind of known around the country. Like, people come from all over to go to Fairfield, just down the road, because it is a really cool experience. They have a arena where they set up kind of a stage, it's almost like a rock concert. It's crazy, I mean, there's lights and, oh, it's amazing. So a great performance opportunity for our kids. Again, they killed it, it's their last one, always special for our seniors. And we got Best Show Concept, that was kind of a cool one as well. So a nice way to end our season. Next one. So some other things that we do, other than our season, you know, we do a winter concert. We perform throughout the district, we typically do our, you know, winter tour. We didn't quite do that in full-blown this year, but we go to the elementary schools and I know that that's one of the first times that kids see our program and see, you know, the fancy dresses and the things like that. We just had our cabaret performance a couple weeks ago. A lot of these students you see performing came straight from rehearsal from Shrek. Our musical Shrek is in a couple weeks, which will be a lot of fun. We have a spring concert graduation. So it's an all-year commitment to be a part of this program, but they get to do so many wonderful things and like I said, I enjoy spending my time with them. Here's just some pictures from the show, you're gonna see some little video clips here in a second, but like I said, you get to see the joy on their faces, you can go to the next one. Loving what they do, makes me proud. And then the next one here is just a little snippet of some things from our show. All right. So that whole show, and you watch the whole thing, is about 15 minutes long and it's nonstop energy. Those kids don't quit moving the whole time. Just the conditioning physically to do it. And again, the dedication they take to put the time in to do it while they're doing a million different things. Again, it's the best of the best. These are the kids taking AP classes who are, you know, involved in other activities and they're just pretty amazing. So again, I want to thank you guys for being here, kind of just hearing a little bit about that. And thank again our board members and our administration for your support of our program. We, we appreciate that. So we are going to perform a little bit of our, we're going to actually perform the whole ballad for you, if you would. So I will give to you, okay, Edgewood Coreleers, if you'd be winking your way out here, we will get started. All right. Very good. I'm going to go ahead and turn things over to my counterpart, Mrs. Carmen Fields. She's going to talk to you a little bit about the Overtures, who is our middle school program. So here you go.
Thank you. As Mrs. Wolf said, my name is Carmen Fields and I am half of the Fields Duo. That is the music department at Edgewood Middle School. You're going to meet my husband in just a little bit. But I am very honored to be here and I want to say a huge thank you for having us and a huge thank you for supporting our programs. When I went to the middle school, one of my main goals when I moved there was to bring back the middle school show choir program. Seven years ago, which is crazy to think about, it's been that time. We started the Edgewood Overtures as a group that would meet in the spring and would perform one time. They would, they would be a special guest at our dinner theater. Four years ago, we were sitting at a show choir competition, watching a fellow local middle school group. I won't say who. And I looked at Mrs. Wolf and I said, we're going to go competitive next year, aren't we? And she said, I think you are. So I blame her for that. I had always said we would never go competitive. And here we are four years later as a, not just a competitive show choir, but a very competitive middle school show choir. As Mrs. Wolf said a little bit, we had 127 students audition for our middle school program this year. We had 49 make the group, which has a record year for us. You're going to see a little highlight of that. But again, a huge thank you to you for your support. A huge thank you to our administration for going with us in that support. At the middle school, we have over one third of the population choose to take a music elective. That is not including our general music classes that are for general population. That is our band and our choir alone. Our classes have an over 90% retention rate throughout the years. This is not including our extracurriculars. So I am so excited to get to show you just this small portion of what these students do. You're going to hear a little bit in their own words and they say it better than I can. So I'm going to turn it over to them.
My name is Julia Ruggles and I'm in seventh grade. And what I like most about Overtures is getting to know new people and having fun with the rest of the group. And one of my favorite memories is when we got first runner up on our last show at Lebanon.
My name's Myanna Castellanos. My favorite memory in Overtures was probably going to Lebanon on stage. That, like getting on stage is like absolute my favorite. Like the first time I got on stage, I was so happy. I started to cry. That's how happy I was when I was on stage.
So truly, again, from the bottom of my heart, a huge thank you for supporting our programs, both of them. What you see, these students, it is the two of us putting our heart and souls into these. It's so awesome to have an amazing partner to roll into these competitions with when you are almost over a hundred students strong. And they say, where's your, where are your team of directors? And we go, it's, it's us. So I really cannot thank you enough for what you do. We hope next year to be able to put on a performance for you. Unfortunately, many of my students are actually training for the swap track meet. So they are in track season and excited. So we will be back next year to hopefully share live with you, but thank you for having us.
All right. Let's give them a round of applause. Once again, I want to thank you for allowing us to bring some school spirit and marching Cougar pride to the board meeting tonight. My name is Mr. Field, Assistant Band Director and Director of Percussion. As most of you know, Mr. Arnold is currently in the hospital and we are sending him our best wishes daily and prayers for speedy recovery. The Edgewood Marching Cougars have had a long tradition of excellence. I'd like to share some of the marching band accomplishments over the past few seasons. Since rejoining the OMEA marching circuit in 2015, the band has qualified for state finals every year. This can only be accomplished by earning a superior rating at a regular season contest. For the last three years, the band has earned the top rating of superior at state finals. According to the OMEA records, it has been 30 years since Edgewood received a one at state finals. I would like to also recognize the percussion section of the band. Last fall, they were undefeated at every competition the marching band competed at. This is a huge accomplishment and I'm very proud of their hard work and dedication this year. Also in the winter, the Edgewood Percussion Ensemble competed at OMEA solo and ensemble competition, earning themselves another superior rating from the judge. Our staff is committed to provide a high level, challenging and rewarding experience for all of our kids. And we thank the board and administration at Edgewood for their support. We will now leave you with the Edgewood Fight Song. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Elizabeth Paulson. I am the middle school art teacher, one of the middle school art teachers. I teach sixth and eighth grade art. I love what I do. I am also an Edgewood grad. I feel like that's important to say because that's one of the reasons that we want to come back here. As many of you know, Eric Pletz at the high school, he helped me create my portfolio to go into college and go into this area. So I'm super grateful for that. And I wanted to come back and continue to grow the program. And this July, it'll be almost 10 years. So I am, like I said, super grateful for that. And I just wanted to take a minute to share what we've done throughout this year. Some of my students helped us put together some artwork that we have collectively gathered throughout the art, throughout the school year. Over here, you'll see some of our eighth grade students' artwork, also coupled with our sixth grade artwork. So we start out in sixth grade with some 2D projects. We work our way up to 3D projects. We have an art showcase. There's one coming up in May. So that's May 12th. We hope you all can make it. That is 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM. And the students do a lot of awesome things throughout the school year. We get to do live sculpture. We get to showcase some of the amazing ceramic pieces that they get to work on. One of my big things that I love to do is just introduce new things to them. So whether that's materials or experiences, this year we got to go to the art museum once again, and that was one of my favorite experiences with my students because some of those students have never had the chance to experience an art museum yet. And so getting to do that with them and getting to see those big paintings with them, that was just such an awesome experience. And then going out through the school year, we also have some pieces over here that just talk about why art is so important to my students. One of our big pieces as teachers is allowing students to express themselves, and especially in middle school, just hearing some of those kids get to do that every day, you know, who are going through rough stuff in middle school. I remember how I felt when I was in middle school. And getting to see some of those kids work through that in their artwork and just like throw it into that, it's just a special experience to be a part of. And I just, I love my job and I'm passionate about it, and I'm super grateful to be able to share that with you. Thank you.
Hello, my name's John Caesar. I am the Social and Emotional Learning Director for Edgewood City Schools, and I'm also the Virtual Academy Coordinator for Edgewood High School. Laney, you want to come on up here? We're not gonna sing, okay? We'll make sure that that's okay. You don't want me to sing with you. One of the things about the Virtual Academy, I want to talk about that here a little bit and introduce Laney. We are, we are going to be getting our 300th graduate this year. It's a program that we started five years ago. And just a little background about the program. We work with students who are at risk either with credits, maybe behaviors, some obstacles outside of school that are affecting the student's learning. And we are very, very proud of all of our students. We have a wonderful staff, but our staff would even tell you that our students do all of the work. And one of the signs that we have in our classroom is make today count. There is no one that personifies that than the young lady that is standing next to me today. She has gone through some obstacles throughout her high school career that kind of put her behind with her credits. And then she just really worked through all of those. And, you know, she's had some support systems all the way through. However, the majority of this is all because of her. She's worked through all of her obstacles and she is set to graduate on time this year. We're really proud of her, and I'd like to introduce Laney Young. She is a senior this year in the Virtual Academy program.
Hello, my name is Laney Young. I am a victim of sexual assault. This happened my freshman year. In eighth grade, I was diagnosed with many chronic illnesses that have put me in the hospital many times. I've been through court. I've been to the hospital so many times, I cannot even count. And it put me back a lot, and I was not going to graduate until I was told that I had to join the Virtual Academy. And I thought, oh my God, my life is over. And the Virtual Academy has saved me. I can't tell you how appreciative I am of you and Mr. Harrison and Ms. Simpson and my grandma, my Mia here, my number one supporter. The Virtual Academy has offered me time that I feel like I did not have and has given me an experience like no other teacher has. My classroom has been individualized for me. I can work at a pace. I mean, as long as I'm graduating, I can work at any pace. They're very, very, very supportive and they're here for me constantly, always asking me, what can I do for you? Do you need anything graded? You did great on this. And something that no other teacher has done for me, I've been a part of overtures. I've taken your art class. Ms. Halsey was my first grade teacher. I've been an Edgewood student forever, through and through. And this community has come together to support me for as long as I can remember. Thanks to Virtual Academy, I'm graduating this year, and I'm so happy to say that. And I can't wait to show other students that they can do it too, that no matter how hard you're struggling, we can pull you out of that. He can pull you out of that. All you have to do is look around you and try, keep going, and don't give up. Thank you so much.
Just one little thing. When Mr. Fussnicker asked me to find a student, you know, we, we have some really reserved kids in our program. And I was talking to Mr. Harrison, who could we get? Ms. Simpson, who could we get? And, you know, we brought up Laney Young, and I said, you know, when she gets here today, let's bring her over. And I was asking Mr. Harrison, all right, how are we gonna bribe her? All right, so we gotta get food, we gotta do something, what are we gonna do? And so I'm, I'm kind of building it up here, and she sits down, and I just ask, we kind of need your help. And before I even said, she's just asked her what we, before I could even get out what we wanted her to do, she said yes, automatically. And, you know, she, everyone talks about what great kids are at Edgewood and everything. You know, Laney is gonna be one of the standards that is set, not only for the Virtual Academy, but for Edgewood High School. So we're really proud of you, Laney. Thank you.
My name's John Thomas. Whoa, like, I'm the business manager here at Edgewood City Schools. I'm also an Edgewood graduate, unlike you others. I was around when this place right here didn't exist, this auditorium. I remember Mr. York getting this passed and how some people felt like this was too much for us. And we had to go out and raise a little bit of extra money just to get the project completed, to get this out. I don't know how we'd do without it. This place is gorgeous and the choral players and the band and all that you do and perform in here, just great, great night. So unfortunately, you have to listen to me for just about one more minute. I'm getting ready to introduce Mrs. Brandy Valentine. Brandy, if you'll come up, please. This was another project that happened during COVID. And we had some setbacks that we had to get through to get this to happen, but schools across the country are putting in what's called school health-based centers. And in this area, they were mainly in larger cities, larger areas, Cincinnati, Hamilton, Middletown, Fairfield. And I had known a couple doctors there, and I approached them and asked if we could possibly take a look at this for a rural area. And they said, well, why not? And we had to do, write a grant and do a lot of studies and stuff, and we got that done. And then low and behold, during COVID, we don't, we could only let so many people enter the time to build it. So it was a challenge to get built, but it did. And then we found out that we had also an Edgewood grad that was gonna come in and lead as one of the physicians there at the health center. And we're just really happy, and I think she's gonna tell you some really good things about what happens at primary healthcare. Thank you, Brandy.
Thanks. So I am an Edgewood graduate. I have three kids in the district. I have a sixth grader, a sophomore, and a senior. And also wanted to thank Mrs. Wolf and Mrs. Fields because my senior has been through overtures, and she actually sang up here tonight. So it's a really great program, and thank you for letting them go to Nashville. They had a great time. I was there. It was wonderful. So as far as our primary health building, we saw almost 3,000 primary care medical visits just for me alone last year in 2021. That's more than any of our other school-based health centers. So that includes Fairfield, Middletown, and Hamilton. At Edgewood, we saw more than any of those. And we look to exceeding that this year. In quarter one 2021 compared to quarter one 2022, we've seen 300 more visits than we had the quarter last year. So we should exceed that as well. Lots of good things. My memory's not great, so I had to write it down. So some things that we have, and as John talked about, we had some challenges because we opened up summer of 2020, so we couldn't even have a grand opening. So it was kind of word of mouth that we were able to get people in. But changes that we have now, because COVID is getting a little better, we can now see sick and well children in office, so that's exciting. We had to do a lot of tele-visits. Vision, we have an eye doctor there twice a week now, so they're able to see visits. Dental is open four days a week. We should have it five days a week soon. And we have a behavioral health provider three days a week onsite, and then tele-visits two other days a week. We've got a lot of positive feedback from the community, mostly the ability to transport to and from the school. So if you're not familiar with the school-based model, we can see patients from the community. We can see kids from the community. Parents can bring them in, but we can also see them from the schools. So if a parent wants to make an appointment, they can do that separately. The nurse can do it if there is a child that comes down that's sick that needs an appointment, and the school transports them to me, we can see them. The parents can be there if they'd like to. They're always welcome, but they don't have to be as long as they're consented and they can come see us. So for instance, I had, we had a letter from a grandmother who she has, she has custody of two children in the district. She's disabled. She can't get her kids to appointments. One of those children had a cavity that was keeping her from being able to eat. She was not doing well in school, so we were able to transport her to the school or to our health-based center. Our dentist was able to fill the cavity. She got better. Appetite got better. School got better. We also had another good story where it started off where mom of one of the girls in the district, she lost her job because of COVID. So then she lost her insurance. And then they couldn't see their provider because they didn't have insurance and they didn't take self-pay patients. So we take anybody regardless of ability to pay, if they have insurance or not, or if they're self-pay. And then she got a job, but she still didn't have insurance, and she couldn't take time off of work because if she took time off of work, she wasn't gonna get paid. So we were able to bring her to our office. We got her set up again. We got medications. She started to succeed in school. She had some good success there. So lots of good things coming from the program. Things that we are looking to try to do for 2022, increase the number of consented students. So that's a little difficulty that we had this year and last year just because of COVID. A lot of people don't know about the services that we have. They also don't know that they don't have to give up their primary care provider or their pediatrician. This can be in addition to it, so they don't have to transfer care to us. If they need vaccines, they're behind on vaccines, they can come see us just to get vaccines and get caught up. The other thing is making sure that the community knows that we're available to them also, and we're open year-round. So we're not just open during the school year, we're open year-round. So those are some of the things that we're trying to improve, but as far as the numbers, it looks like we've, we've got good success coming.
We are?
Edgewood.
Right. Know how everybody else feels, but I actually had goosebumps, so.
That was great. It was awesome.
Yeah. Appreciate that.
Unbelievable.
Everybody took time out to come do that on very short notice. Good at going off Good at going off track here. I want to welcome Paige Hurd, our new EMUS director. And she is, she's actually already started, so she's already in the swing of things. I believe she's already started, so. Again, thanks, thank you, everybody that come out tonight. I really appreciate it. And I mean, you can just see the impact that our teachers have on our students. And look how many of them come back here to teach. I mean, that means a lot.
You know, I think we, I think we showcased an awful lot of success tonight. I mean, that took just over an hour and there was some, there was an awful lot of inspiration and an awful lot of incredible accomplishments over the course of this past school year. And I, I think that was long overdue and I'm very glad we did that tonight. I think that was incredible.
I'd hate to mention names because I don't want to leave anybody out, but I'm going to take the time to mention them. I mean, Jake White, Libby Wolf, Carmen Fields, Nick Fields, Liz Paulson, John Caesar. Thank you for putting all that together and that's, I don't know what else to say. I love it. John Thomas, we'll throw you in there, too.
Changing lives.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. If anybody else wants to speak on any of that, you're more than welcome to. If not, we're going to go ahead and move on to public participation. And just a few things before we start public participation. Participants must recognize by the presiding officer and will be requested to preface their comments to an announcement, to announce their name, address, and group affiliation when appropriate. Each statement will last no longer than three minutes unless extended by the presiding officer, and all statements must be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address any board members individually. So I've got one person signed up is Carleen Jaeger.
I am an Edgewood graduate. My children are Edgewood graduates and I have grandchildren going to school. It was noted that, it was a nice presentation tonight, very exciting, but it wasn't livestreamed that we can tell. Very unfortunate if people wanted to see that and they didn't get the opportunity. That being said, at the last board meeting, we were educated in the job of the Board of Education that they set policy and hire and fire. You also vote. History is January 23rd, 2012. There was a motion, grade level configuration at the high school and middle school for the 2012, 2013 school year. The current high school levels will move to the new high school building on Boose and Bark Road. The middle grades will, the middle school will have grades six, seven, and eight. They will relocate to the former high school building and that is, you know, what was going to happen for that school year. It was voted on by Mr. Miller, Mrs. Ashcraft, Mr. Hertchannick, Mr. Osborne, and Mr. Wortley, all voting yea. There were no nays and the motion carried. February 6th, 2013, again, a motion to realign the buildings. And again, Mr. Miller, Mr. Hertchannick, Mr. Wortley, Mrs. Ashcraft voted yea. Mr. Osborne voted nay. The motion carried. March 26th, the board had approval for the, asked for approval for the administration offices to move, the motion was made by Mr. Hertchannick and seconded by Mr. Miller to not allow the administrative offices to move to the new high school without the Board of Education approval. The ayes were Mr. Hertchannick and Mr. Miller. The nays were Mr. Wortley, Mrs. Osborne, and Mrs. Ashcraft, so the motion was denied. These are examples of board policy to bring items affecting the placement of students and offices in the buildings before the Board of Education for a vote. So then I decided I'm going to educate myself on board policy. It's a lot and this isn't even all of it. So you have a philosophy of the board. The Board of Education is a legal entity for providing a system of public education within the geographic area of the state of, in the state of Ohio. The system was created by and governed, governed by the state statutes. The members of the board are therefore state officers chosen by citizens to represent them and the state in the legislative management, management of the school. The Board of Education has the dual responsibility for implementing statutory requirements pertaining to public education and for meeting the desire of the citizens. While the board has an obligation to determine and assess the citizens' desires, it is understood that when the citizens elect-
Ms. Jaeger, it's been three minutes.
That's a shame.
No, no.
No.
Is there, is there a specific point we're going to get to?
What, yeah, yeah.
Let's, let's get to it.
Okay, there's policy here and you don't follow all your policy. Let me get to my final statement and maybe I can wrap this up for you. Some members of this board and the administration have failed to come to this community. And this is in policy, you are to interact with us and we with you. You want us to come to you. We do. We should be interacting. We should have a response to our questions, our concerns, and we're not getting it. We get nods, we get look down, look up, anywhere, but no communication. There's no active back and forth between you and us. And that is part of policy.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And do you know that it wasn't livestreamed tonight?
This is being recorded and it will, and it will be put out when the meeting's over.
But it was not livestreamed.
Okay, that, it will be put out when the meeting's over and you can watch it at your leisure at any time. You can, you can watch it several times if you like, and I hope some people do because we had some great presentations tonight. That's the only one we have signed up, so at this time, we will move to treasurer items. Mrs. Hansel, would you like to start?
Yes, I'm seeking approval of the board minutes from March 28th, 2022.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the board minutes of the regular board meeting of March 28th, 2022.
So moved.
Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry.
Second.
Mr. York, any discussion? Mrs. Hansel, would you call a roll, please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The second item is approval of the financial report for March of 2022.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the March 2022 financial report.
So moved.
Mrs. Ashcraft, Mr. York. Mrs. Hansel, would you call a roll, please?
Any questions?
Any questions?
No.
Yes, Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero. The next item is approval of the donation from Edgewood Youth Basketball.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the donation of the Edgewood Youth Basketball. Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. York, any discussion? Mrs. Hansel, would you call a roll, please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next item is approval of the contract with the Medicaid service provider.
I need, I'm looking for a motion for approval of the Medicaid service provider.
So moved.
Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pressler.
Mr. Pressler, any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
So can you just tell us kind of what the service agreement is? I know it's with Medicaid, but what does that mean? Because I read the contract, but it doesn't-
A lot of our students, well, a lot of our students qualify for Medicaid and we provide a lot of services that are covered by Medicaid. And some of that stuff gets billed during the school year and we get, receive payment from Medicaid for those services. But then there's a lot of stuff that can't be billed during the school year. So this company pulls all that together. It's about 18 months after the school year's over, they go back and they pull all the other services together and apply for more money, more reimbursements for our district through Medicare. Okay. Thank you.
This is the same that we, this is routine?
This is something we've done for years here.
Yeah, this is the same thing, yeah.
Yes. It became big, I don't know, maybe, I don't know, eight to 10 years ago is when this became a big hot button issue.
Okay. Ms. Hansel, would you call a roll, please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next item is the resolution accepting tax rates and amounts.
Looking for a motion to approve the resolution accepting the tax rates and amounts.
So moved.
Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ashcraft, any discussion?
Yeah, I, I got a question and I really probably should have talked about it in the very beginning when we were talking about things that were under the, under the very first item. And one of the things I saw in there with property taxes is that we missed our, our actual property taxes were about $28,000 above what our forecasted property taxes were. And my question is, is do we, how do we forecast that and how can we be off by that much on property tax from a forecast to an actual?
Well, there could be a number of reasons. It could have been a lot of people who were in arrears and paid up. You usually catch that when property sells, you know, the market's hot right now. There could have been a lot of new construction, which would have added to that. We don't necessarily know how much new construction happens and when it's going to hit the tax rules. Typically, how, how you look at it is what's happened in the past and then you forecast it for the future and we know that the county auditor, when they do reappraisals and whatnot, we know how much as an aggregate, the taxes are going to go up in this, in our community. So there's lots of moving pieces. It's not an easy calculation.
Okay. Thank you for that.
But we'd rather have it be too mu, be more than we thought than less.
Good question. Mrs. Hansel, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero. The next item is approval of the Southwest Ohio Conference Assessment.
I'm looking for a motion to approve Southwest Ohio Conference Assessment.
So moved.
Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pressler, any discussion?
Yes, it says in here that, what do we have, till April 30th to, to respond to
Yes, and we can also pay this in two payments, one this year and one next year.
Was there, did we sign an agreement or did we sign anything that specifically called out that there would be fines and penalties for leaving? I don't have all the information, so obviously I'm, I'm looking at this. It seems somewhat arbitrary to me that we just, that they just decided that they're going to fine us $25,000 for, for walking away.
Larry.
Wow.
Larry?
Sorry, that's, it's in the constitution that was approved, whenever the conference was formed over 10 years ago, that that was built in to the conference bylaws, that unless you gave a two-year notice, that there would be an assessment fine, which is consistent with precedent when Little Miami left, I think in 2014 or 15 approximately, that they paid an assessment back at that time as well. And that, those bylaws are approved by all the voting members, which is the superintendents. Is that correct for us or?
Superintendents.
Thank you.
Mr. York?
It looks like what we-
Yeah.
We was, what gave them like a year and a half notice is?
They, they were given notice and it was to the committee's surprise that they paid it really quickly because there was a lot of discussion about whether or not they would pay. They came to, to the meeting and presented, represented themselves, but they, but they did. They paid that and moved on. I, I am, because I'm, you know, a member or work for another district in this, I was not in the committee that voted on this. I didn't go. I, I stayed away so that I would not have a conflict in this at all. But, and I'm not going to, I'm going to abstain tonight, just so you know, when the vote comes down, because I don't want, I don't know that I need to, but I'm going to. But yeah, there's a historical precedent that has been set for districts that leave early. You can leave the league if you give more time. There is provision to leave, leave the league and go through a certain number of quarters or semesters or whatever.
So it was four semesters is what I thought I read.
Yeah, but when a school wants to leave early, then that's when they assess that. And I think what, what goes into that, so it does, it does seem arbitrary, but what goes into that decision on the amount has to do with lost revenue for the districts that are there and many factors. I know Russ was in that meeting. I wasn't there, so I don't know all the discussion that went on, but there's, there were, there are a lot of factors that go into it. And I think that amount, this amount, $25,000, is the same amount that maybe Little Miami was, was assessed when they left as well.
That's my understanding. They left within a year and, and we gave basically 18 months. I mean, we, we were-
Short, obviously, but I just, I think it would be worth going back to the board and asking if that is at all negotiable, considering that we're in a slightly different situation than the historical precedence.
Well, the issue I have is, is, you know, the league looked a lot different back then, too. I mean, I'm sure the other teams that are in the league, they're looking with us and Ross leaving, they're, they're looking to get out, too. I mean, the league's coming to an end. I mean, writing's on the wall, so I mean, I just don't know how they can justify. I mean, I'm sure it looked a lot different in 2015 when Love 'Em left.
Not sure.
Little Miami.
Or Little Miami.
I remember-
I think at one time we had Little Miami and Wilmington, which, which made an eight. Was there an eight school?
At the time that Little Miami left, there were, there were only six schools in the league.
Okay.
Wilmington left, came and, came and went twice, actually. But there were, there were six schools, districts in the league when Little Miami left.
What was there in 2000, or 10 years ago when it originally started? Do you know?
I, I wasn't part of that discussion. I think John, Mr. Thomas was, so I don't know how much history you want to go to, but-
Eight schools.
Eight.
Wilmington being one, but our form was the FAC, U C broke up and we were the leftover eight. And Wilmington, let it be known in the very beginning that they weren't stacked. And we said, well, if you find another league, well, so that's kind of how, how that went. So that made the east, because the schools that broke off went on their own, but that's fit for ourselves. That's how, that's how we came.
Well, I think, I think the, the SWAC league has actually met and had a vote. It was four to two. Obviously, we know who the two was that voted no, was Edgewood and Ross. And I believe there was even some conversation. Now, I was not there, do not quote me on this, but they said that our student, our student athletes could not compete for league championships if we didn't take care of this. I think that was kind of how it was put to us, which is would be pretty, pretty bad way.
I, I don't disagree. I think that we have some financial responsibility here. It just seems to me that $25,000 is a lot of money.
Does anybody know the answer to this? What happens if the league does dissolve and we've paid $25,000? Where does that money go?
I don't know. We wouldn't be in the league, so.
Honestly, I don't know where the money, it went into the, I think it lowered, they lowered the fee, the membership fees when Little Miami paid, but not to the $2,000, $25,000. So I, I don't even know.
Well, I mean, we're not-
Well, I mean, we're not looking at twenty-five thousand, they're looking at having fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Because there's going to be two schools paying this.
Yeah.
So what are they going to split that up between the four schools and take them twelve, five each? Because they're not going to be able to have a league with four. I agree, I mean, it's frustrating, but I don't know, I wouldn't want our students, student athletes to suffer because of that.
I don't disagree with you here, I just, I don't, I hate to vote yes, but I hate to vote no, so it's one of those.
I know, I'm with you.
That's why I say, I, I think that, I mean, I'm, I'm going to vote yes because I, I think that, you know, it's something that we should, we should do to be fair to our student athletes, but I do think it's worth going back and asking for reconsideration on the amount.
So, so you said we can do half now and half next year?
Yeah, they're going to invoice us and they have not invoiced us yet.
Okay. Let's pay half and hopefully they all fall apart before the other halves do.
Never know.
I don't know. Live streaming, I guess. All right, Ms. Hansel, would you call a roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Abstain.
Motion carries four, zero with one abstention. The next item is the stadium lights project, we have a motion to approve the stadium lights project.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the stadium lights project. I believe that there was some information here in front of you, so moved. Mr. Pressler, do I have a second?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft, discussion? Ms. Hansel, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution to participate in the E P C Cooperative School Bus Purchasing Program for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two.
I'm looking for a motion to participate in the E P C Cooperative School Bus Purchasing Program for two thousand twenty-two.
So moved.
Mr. York, do I have a second?
I second.
Mr. Messerschmidt, any discussion?
So, this is different than we have before, correct?
No, I've seen it in prior meetings, but the E P C is a daynary consortium that we belong to and they put out a bid every year for school buses and we want to buy buses off their bid, so we need to join the bid.
Right, but we're buying four, but we're getting a deal on this.
Yeah, and that's a different resolution.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, this is just to be part of the bid process for E P C, it's, I think it's the next one.
Okay, sorry.
It's okay.
Ms. Hansel, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. And now I would like a resolution to approve the purchase of four school buses.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the purchase of four school buses. Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second?
I second.
Mr. Messerschmidt, any discussion?
Yeah, my, my question on the buses that are coming out of service, the four buses that are coming out, I'm not an expert on school buses, but some of these seem like they're relatively low miles for, for what they are. Do we sell those, what do we, how did, what, what happens to those buses?
Well, sometimes we sell them, a lot of times I think what we're doing with this is taking them and using them for parts to repair other buses. We'll, we'll go to the bottom of the food chain on the buses. We're taking these out of service and then we'll go down the food chain, so to speak, and get rid of or part or do whatever to the four oldest buses we have in our fleet. We, it should be noted that we've got federal funds to pay for fifty percent of the cost of each of these four buses. And then we had to let them know which buses we were taking off of a route in order to get the federal funds. So that's what we're doing, but we can use them for, we, we use them for sub buses. If a bus is being repaired, we do have to have so many buses on standby to use in a route. We also have to have a couple of extra buses to use for extracurriculars because the buses might not be back from their regular route yet. We've got to take a team somewhere, so there are uses for them. And then, like I said, the bottom of the food chain either gets parted out or sold. They're not worth a lot, I can tell you that, we get very little for them.
So out of the, the, you just said, I thought you said that you had federal funding for fifty percent of the cost of these, so, so out of the ninety-one thousand, eight fifty-five, we're only going to pay half of that per bus, is that?
Yes, mhm.
Okay. Is this typical, like every year, is this a typical thing?
No, this is just a one-time thing, I think, this just happened this year. We, they, we were granted the money due to our T one report, which is the busing report, and I guess the state or the feds decided they better help, help school districts with busing. It's kind of nice.
Yeah, in my time on the board, I've never seen a buy two, get two free, never.
So the, the money that we're spending on these, well, I guess that takes me to another question. So would we be life cycling those other buses if it wasn't for this, or would we have kept those in service longer?
Well, I think we, I think you're on a system here that you buy one or two every year, so the fleet doesn't get too old. So we probably would have bought two, but since they came along and they were paying fifty percent, we decided to go ahead and get four and hopefully we got them this year and may, and maybe next year they'll be more expensive. So hey, good thing we got them this year while the price was cheaper.
Yeah, totally makes sense.
I don't know what will happen next year. Do you know, John, if there's a plan next year to buy? If we buy four this year, we probably could skip a year.
Yeah, you could skip a year, we've actually only bought one, I think it was last year and then maybe two years prior to that at once. We have skipped years where we didn't buy two, we only bought one. You had to qualify for this program and part of the qualification was four had to come off and they hadn't approved before we came off. So it was like a grant situation, not everybody got it, not everybody did. Shane went ahead and did all paperwork, got it all, so, but yes, you could get that situation where, looking at the cleanup and back from the, I would say definitely, probably only maybe one next year. Maybe not, just have to look, we don't arbitrate this, get rid of it, there's other stuff. Another thing, Mr. Messerschmidt, that a lot of times it's the body wear as much as it is the end wear, so over time that starts to cause problems.
I'll be honest, I didn't realize they had wooden floors until I saw this quote.
Yeah, it's, I've never seen, I've, I've taken that quote, I'm sorry. I've never seen a situation where you could get four buses or buy two and get two free, it's.
And they're coming, the money's coming out of permanent improvement too, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So it's not general fund money?
Yeah, which is.
And we have, we have the money in that account to pay for this.
One of the things that the district did a few years ago was pave the bus parking lot. And when it was gravel, our buses rusted and rotted away a lot faster than they do now because they were sitting on gravel and they got wet and damp and rust was easily, would eat them up real quickly. So, you know, that's, they're, they're in an environment that prolongs the life of the buses, but yet they do come to an end. As you know, they do a lot of travel.
Any more discussion?
No, sir.
Ms. Hansel, would you call a roll, please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr., Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next item is approval of the Head Start lease at Edgewood Primary School for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Looking for a motion to approve the Head Start lease for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three school year.
So moved.
Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second?
I second.
Mr. Messerschmidt, any discussion?
This is the same lease we've done for?
Yes, from, through the Butler County E S C.
How many years?
I couldn't tell you that, but I guess as long as you've had a preschool program there or Head Start program there.
Mrs. Hansel, would you call a roll, please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next item is a revision to that administrative and exempt compensation schedule that we passed last month. We need a revision approved.
Looking for a motion to approve the revised administrative and exempt compensation schedule.
So moved.
Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ashcraft, any discussion?
Yeah, well, I, I don't, I looked at this, I don't see what's different.
Yeah, I can't find what's different. There was one, one cell that got mistyped when we typed it over, we couldn't find the original thing, so we had to retype it. Oh, shoot, my thing just went blank, blank. On level zero, thank you. On level zero, for someone to be able to use the retirement pickup on the pickup, level zero should have read total Edgewood years, but it was mistyped into Edgewood administrative years. And there was no intention to change that at all because all we wanted to change last time was the retirement pickup on the pickup. So I thought we needed to change that back and have that reapproved because we didn't intend to change that. I didn't point that out at last meeting and I didn't want that to be changed because you guys weren't aware that you changed that.
That was like a where's walters sort of situation.
Yeah, I didn't catch it, someone else pointed it out to me and I felt terrible about it, so I apologize.
Any more discussion? Ms. Hansel, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. And that's it, I have no informational items tonight. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hansel. Next, we have superintendent items. Mr. Fussneck, would you like to start?
First item, I'll be looking for a motion to approve two field trips.
Looking for a motion to approve two field trips, leadership conference and F F A.
So moved.
Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. York, any discussion?
Typical camps, they have an F F A camp for five days that is located in Carrollton, Ohio this summer. And then the H O Z O program will be going to the Gaylord Opera Land Resort, Tennessee, and this is paid for through Butler Tech.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Hansel, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Next item, Mr. Gabbard, I'm looking for a motion to approve a request for a memorial.
Looking for a motion to approve the request for a memorial.
So moved.
Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pressler, any discussion?
Would be a memorial for Cheryl Curry and it'd be a sign that'll be hanging in the corridor in the hall.
How many memorials do we have across the district, do we? Is that, is it commonplace, is that something we, I've never noticed.
We've got a few.
We have, we have, John, as the business manager, how many memorials do we have across our district?
I know we have some benches, we have some trees, we have some sculptures.
Flower beds.
Yeah, the number's not really important.
There's some things that date back to the seventies, eighties.
Yeah.
Stone down in the ground, a tree that was planted. I couldn't tell you how many. We've had a, the last one would have been, the bench, maybe. I do know that early on, it just happened and now with the policy place agreement stuff, it has to go through the board. At one time, Mr. Messerschmidt, I mean, someone wanted to plant a tree, so they just come out and plant it to the same one. I'm saying it was wrong with that, but there wasn't really a procedure or anything to do such.
I think it's a great idea, I like it, I'm, I'm just curious, you know, precedent on it, so thank you for the clarification.
I wish I had more clarity.
Any more discussion? Ms. Hansel, would you call a roll, please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Gabbard, the next item, I'm looking for a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-two graduates.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-two graduates.
So moved.
Mr. York, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ashcraft, it's just a list of names, right?
Large group, could be as many as three thirty-eight.
That is a big one.
So, I know we're not at three thirty-eight right now, but.
We're working on it.
We're working on it, we have a few in the virtual academy that are real close.
But if they're on here, they're already good to go. Just checking on a family number.
Mrs. Hansel, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Next item, Mr. Gabbard, looking for a motion to approve school fees for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the school fees for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year.
So moved.
Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ashcraft, any discussion?
Yeah, there was a third and fifth grade, the dollar amount is the same as the past, but third and fifth grade, I believe, Dr. Thor, you can assist on this, was a planner fee for four dollars and twenty-five cents that we are not going to use that and that money will go toward the science workbook instructional fees, is that correct, Dr. Thor?
Yes.
But the dollar amount is the same.
It's nice that we can keep it the same. Mrs. Hansel, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Next item, Mr. Gabbard, I'm looking for a motion to approve book rationale for Anthropocene or just book rationale.
Anthrocrisene, is that what you want me to say? I'm looking for a motion to approve the book rationale.
So moved.
Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pressler, any discussion?
This is just, anytime we have a new item that we read in the language arts classes, it goes through the process of vetting it and something we do all the time, went through the committee to vet it and I'm sure Mr. Johnson could probably help us, but something to do with geological age of the earth and the impact that we have on it, that's my best shot at it.
Close, close enough?
Enough.
I, I am curious how they make the connection between a keyboard and Canadian geese. Sure makes for an interesting reading.
I thought that was a mispronounce.
I don't think it is.
Mrs. Hansel, would you call a roll, please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Gabbard, the next item, item F, I am not looking for any motion or any action. These are just the policies for review, they are not attached here. We will be, if you want to locate them, you go to policies on the board docs, go down the draft, and then on the left-hand side in the gray box, you'll see where it says revised policies, volume forty, number two. Nothing, these are just, we do twice a year, updates. Sometimes it's just a one or two words, but when you go into those policies and review them over the next month, we have highlighted in green the recommended change from Neola and the attorneys and we have, we read, redstro- we did a red strike through the words that we are going to recommend the board delete. Like I said, I'm not looking for any action tonight, we're asking for that next month.
Since we're talking about that, well, we talk about student handbooks and stuff like that prior to next year. When do you think we'll do that?
We should have them ready by the end of next month as well. Submit them to the board.
Can we get those maybe a little bit in advance?
Yes.
Have a chance to read those?
For sure.
We submit those for a first read, followed along, or approved.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Hansel, would you call a roll, please? Or do I have a motion? I need a motion for, okay, that's just for information.
Or that was an informational policy review.
The next item, Mr. Gabbard, I'm looking for a motion to approve the open enrollment certification.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the open enrollment certification for fiscal year 2023. So moved. Mr. Pressler, do I have a second?
I second.
Mr. Messerschmidt, any discussion?
This is something we do each year. The only thing that, this is prior to opening it up for the parents and students to apply for open enrollment. The only thing we did was delete at the intra-district. We, we do not have intra-district because they're, the grades are in the same building. That would be the only change. And we just checked, it's open enrollment policy that permits enrollment of students from any district in Ohio. This is something that we, we have to do each year prior to accepting the applications.
Any questions?
I do got a question about open enrollment and I don't follow this all that close. I probably need to start paying more attention to it. But the, the timeline for open enrollment for next school year, are we following the same general timeline that we've followed in the past? I had a parent who's got a child open enrolled and said it seems like that we're, they're saying that they, it feels like it's later this year than it has been in the past. Are we generally following the same timeline?
Ms. Bowers?
We always accept, accept the applications the first Monday of May through the last Friday of June.
It's that way every year?
Every year.
Okay.
There, there may be some parents that apply late. For example, if they move their home or something over the summer. We do allow some leniency for that, but we go there and make sure, you know, the class office and things like that. Before we accept late, but we try to get everything by the last Friday of June. It helps us with staffing for next year.
Okay, thank you for your answer.
You're welcome.
Any more question? Mrs. Hansel, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero.
On the informational items, I just want to say thank you to all the staff members and students for participating in that presentation tonight. It was obviously scheduled for tomorrow. Yesterday, for the services for the student that we lost, I made late notice and they all stepped up. So, thank you to everyone that was involved in that.
That was, that was very well done.
Ms. Adams, that was one of the things she's been doing over the last two days, trying to get everything back together. So, I appreciate her time. And up in the booth, Mr. Kanta, Mr. Steiner, they've put a lot of time into that. So, thank you, guys.
Just for, just general question, I know that this is something we want to try to do to get back to normal pre-COVID. What, what's kind of the expectation going forward? I mean, I don't imagine we can do this every time.
Well, we like.
It's a quarterly thing, an annual thing?
We like to do it every meeting. Recognize one group, not this. This was, we would like at the end of each year to do something like this, kind of a review. But we like to recognize some kind of group or club each month. Next month, we'll be recognizing staff. I don't want to get into too many details, but, you know, we have one school, the Purple Star Award, which is pretty nice. And we're trying to get, you know, a couple of speakers here to talk about that and recognize some other staff members for some things that have gone on before the end of the school year.
Great, thank you.
That's all I have.
Well, pre-COVID, we, we did recognize pretty much a group every month. Nothing like tonight. I mean, tonight was pretty special, I thought. Yeah. Like to get back to normal, like everybody else, I would imagine.
That's all I have, Mr. Gabbard.
Thank you, Mr. Fussneck. At this time, I'm going to look for a motion to move to executive session for some of the following reasons. To consider the appointment, appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. Or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee and to discuss specialized details and security arrangements.
So moved.
Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pressler? Mrs. Hansel, would you call a roll, please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero, and it's 7:55.
Don't really expect.